...part of the movement against plastic bags. And it's one of the things that we feel very strongly about. And I think it's very much true in terms of history. And of course, within the vein of being a progressive school, I was going to say school district, but a progressive city, we feel that this is part of the obligation that we have, that we're now working on being able to set the language for this kind of legislation that we look forward to doing. Now, before we begin our City Council meeting, I'd like to assemble our City Council folks for a special proclamation that we have. And I have here the proclamation. And if you could join me at the front there for the honoring. Okay. I'm going to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Recreation, Mr. Paul Ferante. Paul Ferante. I would like to talk with you. Paul, can you stand with me? And again, we are truly grateful to the kind of work that's been initiated here in Long Beach for the past many years, at least since I've been on the council, with races, with all kinds of events. You know, everyone knows the Easter Egg Contingent Group who really does that, and that's really this department. We have one of the most innovative group of people a part of that. And it's my honor and certainly mine distinct pleasure to be able to provide and tuition this proclamation. And we're glad that Paul Ferante is here representing the recreation as our superintendent. Why don't you sit down?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zorris. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Administration for always supporting all recreation activities with the programs, special events, leisure activities, the facilities that we can see right out the window. We have fabulous program throughout the entire year, and we're very grateful for the support and this recognition by the City Administration. So let's have a nice hand clap. At this time, I'd like to bring up a couple key players from the recreation that do the behind the scenes for our day in and day out and make this city shine. So if any of you please come up, I would like to recognize our maintenance supervisor, Mr. Rudy Benetti. I would like to welcome our recreation leader, Mr. Matthew Copeland. I would like to welcome our other recreation leader, Mr. Matthew Anz. Our administrative aide who does it for administrative assistants actually, who does the whole of the recreation, and we promote them now, Ms. Sarah Nicholas. Our MLK supervisor, Mr. Jay Taj. Our best hand worker of the year, Katie Troy. And her mom, who does, I don't even know what I can say, a fantastic job of over 300 or 400 events she runs throughout the year, Miss Kelly Antrall. And that goalkeeper who takes in over $2 million a year without any missing, this will be about that. I don't think he's getting out of this, Henry. And our amazing special, "To Beat Our Costs", please, with the head ball. Once again, I would like to thank you, Taj, for your dedication to all that you do. Thank you so much. We love you. Put on, you know, all the events, all the programs, and everything we do all throughout the year for your enjoyment. Tonight is going to be a great concert at 8:00. I don't know how long the meeting's going to go. National Boulevard, check it out.
That's your folks, we'll be right waiting for you. I just want to remind Mr. Ferante that I inadvertently brought back the proclamation.
You got pulled out of the front desk?
Yes, yes. Absolutely, absolutely. And again, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. You know, as you can see, it's been a very, very busy summer so far for us. As you can see, you know, between the lightning and the great weather we've been having on certain days, we've been having a very good summer. We want to thank departments like the Police Department for their heroic actions recently in saving two women that went swimming where there were no lifeguards. Which back to me is a tremendous thing, where our Police Department can come in and literally save lives of people. I think our Police Department deserves a great hand for that. And also, I want to thank the MLK for the work that's been done recently in having a community meeting. I took that community advisory piece on curbing violence and curbing the kind of things that we don't want to be hearing. And with that, folks, you know that we also are very touched by the fact that, you know, Texas, we've had the loss of five police officers, and now in Louisiana. We think that this senseless violence that's going on. And, you know, I have to say that I am so much against guns. And I have to say this personally, I still am speaking as the council, but I am so much against that. With that, folks, I think that we started with our meeting. I want to remind everyone that at the end of the meeting, we'll have Good and Welfare. And it's important for folks to sign up for Good and Welfare now when you want to hear what you have to say. It's important. It leads to legislation. As you can see, many of the things that we're discussing and brought into laws have been due to the fact that you bring into us in Good and Welfare, and it becomes part of the record when you do that. The other thing too that I want to remind everyone is that we have a three-minute limit on comments and questions that you might have. And again, lastly, and I'm certainly without much banter about this, we may not be able...
Inside the rack houses of Jim Beam, every barrel's aged four long years for a fuller, smoother flavor. Our history's made from the inside. How will you make yours? Inside the rack houses of Jim Beam, every barrel's aged four long years for a fuller, smoother flavor. Our history's made from the inside. How will you make yours?
...to all your questions. For various reasons, whether we may not even have the answer or it may not be legally possible for us to comment on certain things, but we welcome again your comments. And with that, folks, I turn the meeting over to Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, June 19, 2016 at 7:00 p.m. For the roll call, Councilmember Gotti.
Here.
Councilmember Mandela Jackson. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Ramon Olivas Jackson. President Torres.
Here.
At the regular end of the day, the President of City Manager Jack Schreiber, the Corporation Councilman Robert Agostino has issued a request.
Mr. Ray, please, would you lead us tonight? Would you lead?
I should propose. Goodbye, I am the United States of America. This is the republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Okay, one very last reminder before I turn the meeting over completely, and that is that, again, decorum is expected of everyone. And we feel very strongly that this is part of our function as a city, as a government, that we keep decorum during this meeting. And with that, I will ask for the City update from our City Manager.
Okay. It's a reminder for everyone's safety. Every weekend this July, lifeguards are on duty until 7:00 p.m. As Paul Ferante mentioned earlier, the city's popular pre-summer concert series is ongoing. Concerts are scheduled various days at 8:00 p.m. through the end of the summer. Join your friends and neighbors tomorrow evening for the cameo on New York Avenue at 8:00 p.m. And on Thursday, the ever-popular Bond Journey will be playing on Neptune Boulevard Beach. Visit the city's website for complete schedule. I'll see you there. Family Fun in the Park is back with Recreation Carnival featuring three fun activities for kids who are taking in parks throughout the city. Perfect way to spend the day, especially if your children are not attending camp or they're looking for quick outside activity. The next event, Make Your Own Book, will be held tomorrow from 10 to 1:00 on St. Park. Please visit longbeachny.gov/Rec for the full schedule. While the 2016 Arts and Crafts Festival was a big hit, unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate this year for our fireworks extravaganza, which has now been rescheduled for Labor Day weekend. Please check the city's website for further updates and information about this event. New York Surf Week was a big hit with contests, parties, art show, beach and waterpark, and concerts and more. In addition, surf will all work there again, helping children and adults with disabilities from camp ability. And the Henry Biscardi School experienced the joy and thrill of surfing, putting a smile on their faces and making the ocean accessible to all. Thank you to everyone who helped make this great week a major success once again. Veterans and their families are being hosted by the Long Beach Waterfront Warriors, who arrived in Long Beach on Sunday, and were met by a parade in the 8th Annual Waterfront Warriors 5K Race, welcoming them to our city by the sea. Waterfront Warriors honor and aid wounded, ill, and injured veterans, and their families by bringing them to Long Beach for relaxing vacation and a variety of activities. Thank you to everyone who participated in welcoming the Warriors and their families to Long Beach. This Sunday, the Lions Club will be hosting their annual duck plow in Kennedy Plaza with games for kids, refreshments, raffles, and more. All proceeds go to the Lions' local and Lions charities. Movies on Beach will be taking place this Saturday night with Jaws on Neptune Boulevard at 8:00 p.m. Movies on Beach series is presented by the local civic associations in cooperation with the city, support from local sponsors. Also, as a reminder, the farmer's market is open on Mondays and Saturdays at 9:22. In addition, Arts in the Plaza is open in Kennedy Plaza every Saturday, 10 to 3, through November 23rd. We look forward to seeing you there. And finally, a subject which is finished for today, Baguette is going to be shown on the beach. Bring your own beach chair and join us under the stars this Friday, July 22nd at 8:00 p.m. on the beach, National Boulevard, to learn how we can all protect our oceans and fight classic pollution at a free screening of the award-winning documentary, Baguette: Is Your Life Too Flashlight? We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. And with that, we'll begin our meeting. Mr. Schreiber?
First item this evening is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase an industrial tarmac mower.
Okay, this industrial mower is used for city landscaping such as cutting and carrying cordless grass in the center malls. Funding is available in the capital improvement plan that the City Council approved several months ago.
Okay, are there any comments from the council?
No.
Any comments from the public on this item regarding the new mower that's greatly needed? Okay, you back to the next item?
I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into agreement for the installation of toddler playground equipment at the city's childcare center with the location responsible bidder and to amend the budget.
Okay, the city previously purchased playground equipment for this location and is now having it consold. Again, funding is available in the capital improvement plan that has already been authorized.
Okay, thank you. It's something we look forward to. Any comments from the council on the new equipment?
Is there a timeline for this project?
Yeah, once we award and look forward, there's a 30-game window for installation.
Okay. Yeah, the comments. Okay. How about comments from the public on the new equipment for toddler playground? Okay, we'll move on to our next item, folks.
I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into re-contract masonry work at various locations throughout the city in Long Beach on a as-needed basis.
This is an annual item to lock in the lowest pricing available to the city for potential masonry work. We do bid to so we can get ratings.
I just have one question, Mr. Schuman. Does this include both the labor and the material?
I believe it does, though. I see our deputy commissioner shaking his head.
Yes. Yes, very good, very good. And again, we welcome when people see a dangerous situation, a piece of concrete that's broken, that you notify us so that we can get this work done. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Any questions on this concrete work? Okay, and we go on to our last item?
Last item, item number four, resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into agreement for rehabilitation on 150 West Orange Street in this building.
Okay, due to superstorm sanding the sanitation garage suffered extensive damage, requiring rehabilitation, and the roof of the building requires replacement as it has outlived its life. Funding is provided through both FEMA and the capital improvement plan. And this is part of an ongoing project that I believe this is the second phase of.
I see. Now, during this rehabilitation, will you have to vacate the garage and the equipment that's there so that this work can be done?
I'll allow it.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Pobrizio. Welcome, Mr. Pobrizio. Good to see you. Yeah, I guess the question is, you know, when we're ready, and I remember the last time we did the roof, 10 years ago, I have a date to do.
Yeah, no, this is a really big project. It's a costly project. It's basically $9,000, $2,000. $645,000 comes from the FEMA Public Assistance Program, which will just address the back wall of the facility, which is in a really poor state. An old back wall, so you've got to parallel that wall. And that's the paper portion. And then the roof portion, which is approximately $300,000, is going to probably, it's definitely involved, vehicles being parked on the street, a lot of coordination.
Well, you have to vacate?
We're going to try, we're going to have to talk about it. I think they're going to have to keep the vehicles out of the building, probably for a good part of the construction.
Okay, so we'll probably have to do some planning?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It's going to be a lot of...
Okay, well, let us know what you plan to do with that. Thank you, Mr. Pobrizio.
Before you step down, how long will it take for the residents to be notified about cars being on the street?
It's on the 101st of West Orange, which is pretty much an industrial road. There's no residents off from there. Hopefully, it shouldn't have an impact.
Okay, so there's not going to be an overflow into the residential area?
I don't think so. I think we're going to try to keep it within that one block.
So keep it contained?
If there is any impact on surrounding areas, we'll start to notify.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, and folks, any comments from the public? This is on the garage and rehabilitation work that needs to be done. You know, this is where we repair our buses, our trucks, our city equipment. Very important part of the city function. Okay, and with that, I'm going to go to you.
Okay, talk to the voting portion. I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase an industrial tarmac mower. Would you move the option of this item?
How long do you need to say?
I will.
Yes.
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 I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into agreement for the installation of toddler playground equipment at the city's childcare center with the location responsible bidder and to amend the budget. Would you move the option of this item?
I will.
You have a second?
I will.
Lloyd, Captain Gotti?
Yes.
Captain New York?
Yes.
President Torres?
Yes.
I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into re-contract masonry work at various locations throughout the city in Long Beach on a as-needed basis. Would you move the option of this item?
I'll introduce it.
You have a second?
I will.
Lloyd, Captain Gotti?
Yes.
Yes, would you once again just remind us that we can make sure that we advertise this information to make sure that women as well as minority vendors have the opportunity to farm and stay?
President Torres? Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into agreement for the rehabilitation of 150 West Orange Street in this building. Would you move the option of this item?
I will.
You have a second?
I will.
Lloyd, Captain Gotti?
Yes.
Captain New York?
Yes.
President Torres? Yes.
Deputy Commissioner Postman?
I will.
You have a second?
I will.
Okay.
Lloyd, Captain Gotti?
Yes.
Captain New York?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, thank you, folks. And, you know, it was a very quick meeting, but, you know, an essential one for the city functioning. Again, just as a reminder, we have a three-minute limit on the comments and questions that you might have. And we welcome again the comments. We begin our old Good and Welfare with Mr. Patrick Assise. It's good to see you. I didn't recognize you there. The city.
Yeah, I got a haircut.
Yeah, I got a haircut.
I got a bowl cut.
I get a haircut, and I'm afraid it won't grow again.
Yeah, it won't, it's grown. It's grown back. How you doing? I'd like to commend everybody in the City Council and the City Manager for the fine work you're doing. Patrick Dossis, 225 West Clark Avenue, Long Beach, New York. On the fine job you did on recovery of Sandy, police force, police mission attack, I commend them, everything they do. And the whole public works. All right, everybody's crying on the computer and talking badly about the City Manager and City been did bad job, like they don't want to show their face. They complained about their board book for 12 years. I went up on a board last night for the first time, since you put it back. All right? Beautiful. Everybody's enjoying it, but nobody's coming up here. Thank you. I want to thank you on their behalf, because they don't want to show their face behind a keyboard. All right? Pat yourself on the back and enjoy your week.
Thank you. You know, I just want to make a comment, folks, that Mr. Assise was the person that originally did the restoration of the Granada Towers 10 years ago. So we owe a lot to him, too. Folks, and our next person at Good and Welfare is Mr. Daniel Lepard, I believe. Or am I pronouncing that correctly? I manage to mess up people's last names all the time. Of course, after your partner, right?
That's right.
And it's good to see you.
Nice to see everyone this evening. I just have a few concerns. I'm sorry. Daniel Lepard, 723 West Hornet Street, Long Beach, New York. So I have concerns about the traffic conditions regarding Saturday's beach departures due to sudden intermittent weather. I'm sure you guys are aware that traffic was very dangerous for pedestrians and motorists alike. And I say this not because it took me a long time to build a bridge. I say this because I really think it's a public safety issue. You know, many of our side streets were jammed, non-capacity, intersections blocked, drivers ignoring stop signs, so many various violations and safety hazards. And this looks about, I'd say, 4:45 in the afternoon. And I understand that I can't control people hitting the beach and stuff like that. And I just, a couple of questions about that. So when traffic gets stagnant, and it's a significant amount of time in Long Beach, how can emergency vehicles get over the bridge? For example, ambulance, somebody goes out and asks, "What's the situation?", and things of that nature. And it's for that reason today that I'm speaking before you open the, I have a lot of questions. You may or may not have the answers, but... So whether traffic control protocols pertaining to these situations, or have there ever been situations like this in the past?
Well, we do have our police commissioner here. I don't know if he wants to respond to that. And I know that this question has been coming up quite a bit recently. Danielle, do you have any other questions?
Oh, yeah.
If you can handle all the questions?
Sure. Okay. So like, keeping that in mind, like having protocols for things like that. What, are there any emergency procedure protocols for ambulances going to the hospital? You know, keeping an open lane on the bridge or things of that nature? And also, are you talking to municipalities, like Nesta County and Henderson, about keeping the bridge open and lanes and something like that, and have problems like that? And also, like, when is, if there are traffic controls like that, how do you inform the public? But what means to inform the public to inform that there are traffic control complaints?
Very good question. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. Good evening, and counsel, this is my view. There's two issues that happen when a sudden storm appears. One is by national maritime law, the maritime law, boats have right of way. So when a boat wants the bridge open, they get precedent on all the traffic we have. We go so far in fact that we even request an act of Congress during our fireworks displays to keep the bridge locked down for the two hours while we're stuck in the same bed. Because some of the orders come, some of the visitors to the fireworks show come by boat. So we actually have to put a perimeter around them. And then when the show's over, they go back. And if they demand the bridge be open, the bridge gets open and everyone's stuck on the island. So there's absolutely nothing we can do when that large volume comes, except for the notification, which is something we will start to implement. The second thing, the second point this one part of May regarding the ambulances, we're in touch with medical control. So if there is a big backlog, we would divert to St. John's and Northway Fourth, and that's in the version of medical center, because those roads can handle a much greater volume of traffic. But just be aware that when those walls come up and the people leave the beach box in Atlantic Beach or in Lido, they jam up all the different bridges and the boarding traffic is out there. And again, maritime and those supersede vehicular law, so they have the right of way. And once the bridges go up, there's no protocol even in place, other than aerial parties. Thank you, Commissioner. A very important convention to know. Danielle, thank you for being here. Our next person is Ms. Jessica Carriero. Carriero. And again, I'm wondering if that's something right from the initiation of your name.
I came today to speak about the plastic bag problem we have here in Long Beach and...
Okay, we need your name and address.
Oh, Jessica Carriero, 410 East Harbor Apartments, W. And I just wanted to say that I've only been on the search for 14 years, but there's been a major change from the years I've been living here, from then to now. And it's only going to keep getting worse if we don't say something or tell them about it. and it's only going to keep getting worse if we don't say something or talk about it, because after a while, we're not going to be able to do anything anymore. It's just going to be too bad. Too many people or animals or anything is going to be affected by this, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Jessica. I agree with you.
You know, it takes immense amount of courage to come up and, and speak, and... So, let's hope today we're doing that, for being part of, you know, the civic responsibility that we all have. With that, we also have, and very honored to have here tonight, is Fran Eagleson. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Fran Eagleson, 74 Harmon Street. I'm here to talk about, um, an issue that's been brought up a lot by, um, the canal association, and it has to do with the traffic conditions and the speed in the canals. And I'm really here out of total frustration. Every day I'm in and out of canals all day long because it's the nature of my business. I understand that we can have a cop on every corner. I get all that. I get that people don't police themselves. But I'm asking, I mean, today, three times, three different times, and it's 15 miles an hour, and I'm driving 20, I'm giving you a ticket, but I'm driving 15 to 20. I have people on my tail so badly that I want to slam on my brakes, get out of car, and start screaming at people. This is constant, constant, day in and day out. Aside from the people that are blowing the, um, stop signs, it's gotten, it, I don't know, I'm here 30 years, it just seems like it's worse and worse. This year, it just seems absolutely impossible. So, I'm asking if there is anything that the city can do. I don't know if giving, just doing a ticket class for a couple of days and inundating the... I don't know what there is to do, but I'm reaching out to ask if there's something that can be done, because sooner or later, it's something bad is really going to happen, either to someone in a car, a child. It's a, it's a slow area. I know that there are problems in the west end and other parts of the city, but you can't see around corners. The cars are all tight and it, it's just, it's, it's a disaster waiting to happen, and I don't know what there is to do, but I'm reaching out because today it was like I'm done with this. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Eagleson. You know that, you know, you've been a voice for that part of the community and the entire Long Beach, and we welcome what you have to say and some of the...
Please think about what I'm, you know, asking for, see if that's a possibility.
Maybe the police commissioner also could come up and get addressed this issue.
Thank you again, Commissioner, for being here.
Yes, we have seen the enemy, and it is us. Uh, the people in the canals are the people that are speeding. We do ticket places every so often. We can absolutely do one again, especially in summer months. But it's unfortunately, everyone's in a rush. Um, when I grew up, we were a family of eight with one car. Now I'm a family of six with six cars. So, there's a tremendous change in everyone having a car. Uh, the density here is just amazing. We slowly canals at 15 miles an hour, which is a very safe speed and good speed for the canals, but unfortunately, it's a, uh, enforcement nightmare, because to get guys in there, to do that, we have to pull from, you know, a lot of the other stations that are brought at this podium, such as the bikes in the business district, the stop sign all over town. Everyone's in a rush, but I can guarantee we will be in the canal area during the next few days. I don't want to put the exact days, so that, uh, people could for a day or two. Usually when we do a, uh, dedicated enforcement, it has about a three-month memory. So, we try to get back into the area every so often as the complaints come in. This was the first one we got this week, so we were already ready to deal with this.
Commissioner, are you finding it worse in the summer, the bus?
Um, no, it's, it's, it's worse when people go to work, when people come home, because everyone's in a rush. They want to, they want to get to work, they want to get home. Uh, when the buses come out, we get a tremendous inundation, because they slow everything down by putting out their red lights. So, it's just, it's just, it's a thing we have in there, and when we pull the people over, we pull over people that have spoken at this podium about speeding in the canals, and I make sure I put the right guy who made that ticket's everywhere.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Eagleson. Next, we have, this is, uh, River Shum. Welcome. The name you dress was very good. Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Um, I'm here with the, um, baggage campaign across Long Beach.
And your dress was very good.
Oh, it's in the current shoe. Um, it is very important that we stop all of the bag usage across the island due to the fact that it's going to start clogging our oceans, our seas, our canals. As a resident of the canal, I see many, many plastic bags floating in the waters, and it's horrible, horrifying. Fish die, turtles die, my favorite animals, and everything else will, will eventually die if you do not take care of this. Also, I have another thing. I'm a resident of, um, Carrick is not one of the best streets to be living on due to the fact that there are cracks. Um, so we, not so we jump, it floods a lot whenever it rains, and I would just ask for something to be done. It's, it's getting bad.
Okay, thank you. You know that when you come up and speak, it, it goes on better, and this is what we want to encourage our young people to do, to be able to come up to the mic and do exactly as this young man just said. And you're welcome, and we will be looking into those things, those issues that you bring in. Um, our next person is Mr. Ronald Matheny, I believe, is the name.
Hello.
Not sure if that's the right, could be that I'm not reading it right, and, uh, again, after your pardon.
I hope this is Lance Torres, is that your name right? My name is Ronald McKenna, the State City Council, Ronald McKenna. Uh, a while ago, something, a while ago, we had a, a meeting, um, in the Long Beach Center, um, and it was about the police involvement in the community, mainly Channel Park and Pine Street. Uh, and at the meeting, with President Detective, you guys were there, uh, even our state senator was there, and it was an awesome meeting. In my, many ways, words, uh, it was successful. But at the meeting, um, there were a lot of questions that the police could not answer. A lot of questions that I felt, uh, that should have been answered, and a lot of the responses were sometimes, this question's above my pay grade, or, uh, that's a question for the bosses, the higher-ups. So, one of my, one of my two questions is, how come the higher-ups or whoever's in charge weren't there to answer some of the questions at hand? I know you guys were there, but there was, uh, someone or a group or entity that should have been there answering these questions, especially when these questions were here to help a community that instead of going protected, feels bullied by the police force. Uh, should I go up? Question two? Okay, question two would be, uh, at the meeting, one of the questions were answered and wasn't really answered, because they just didn't have it. What is our police force, uh, and those who are the higher-ups, quote unquote, doing to diversify our police force? Uh, we, we don't feel in the community that the police force is diverse enough or related to, uh, all communities in town, the Asian, Indian, Black. And those are my questions.
Okay.
Ronald McKenna.
Okay, I, I see our commissioners coming up, and, uh, you know, again, we welcome, we welcome those questions. They're important questions. And, uh, you know, as you can see, uh, you know, we, we have our representatives here, and this is why this is so important, we want to bring the questions to our city council. Commissioner?
Unfortunately, we have a very small police department, uh, and this, uh, forum was put together, together two days notice. I had already had a prior commitment, so I wasn't able to go. I checked my tenants. July happens to be a very big vacation month, so I had a very limited staff that were dedicated to that. The three officers that went were detective sergeant to detective, which was a pretty sizable commitment, and they did bring back all of the various issues. Uh, one, especially that we're looking forward to doing, is having a seminar, uh, if the MLK will have us, explaining how to conduct yourself if you're being arrested, how the whole process works, so that we can take some of the anger out of the, the natural course of business. Um, as far as diversifying goes, we gave a police test last November. Uh, we had a record number of applicants. We advertised at every single MLK center in Queens and Nassau County, uh, encouraging people to come and take the test. The results have come back. Uh, we're not in a position to hire right now. We're waiting for the, uh, list to be certified and the council to decide whether or not we're going to do an in-town list or a out-town list. There are some other issues that are, uh, not under my, uh, control. So, once that happens and we have, uh, the openings, we will look to, to have the police department here in the community.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Mr. Mary Vossevich. Just about here, learning the man. Appreciate, appreciate everyone. That, that, welcome, Mary Vossevich.
I noticed when I view stream, and I know you're not going to leave my, my address, you are not going to get my address. I have been stopped this week. Stopped on the phone. I made a police report. Fifty-seven phone calls in thirty hours. All right, by some man who watches on there, and not my, just myself, several people sitting here, because we gave our name and address. All right, I filed a police report. They've heard of this man before. And quite honestly, he knows I walked my door. He learned everything about me. So, I am telling you, you can have my name. I live in the canals, but ask for the rest, and you can get it where you want. You are not getting it anymore when you have that camera going. That is definitely, I can promise you that. We're putting our lives on the line, giving you our name and address, so any wacko out there in this world today can look us up. He's told on my home phone. My husband is in law enforcement. He told it to stop. Nothing. Then he calls and leaves messages that people you know are in the hospital with heart attacks, waiting for a call back, but you don't, you can't because it says private call. Okay, so I'm just telling you, until this is rectified, you will not get my name and address. Thanks.
Is there anything we can do legally, corporate council, to protect those individuals who come up and speak before us as the council, while at the same time fulfilling our responsibility in terms of the process?
Well, you're really talking about, Commissioner...
Use the mic.
Sorry. Sorry. You're really, you're, you're discussing, uh, police action out of this phase of the game, and has to go through the local channels and procedures, but in this, uh, role, I'm not going to say the name now at this point. But, um, uh, we do request that citizens to provide their name and address for, for action. You're... If I could just say, if you're not sure, why don't you get it? That's what I was about to say.
Okay, that's important to know, important to know.
Thank you.
Yes, and again, Ms. Vossevich, I, I want to, uh, I, I feel horrible about that, because I think that that's, that's the most horrendous thing I've heard yet on this council, attacking our residents. I'm truly sorry. It's horrible.
Yes, they sent people sitting here, going to the same...
That's horrible, horrible.
I saw the hand, several people in the audience.
Horrible, so...
I don't think they're for me. Of course, they won't be for me. They'll be for me.
Okay, okay. Mr. Assise, I'm going to ask that we keep the corn. It's very important, and, and, you know, I, you know, I'm crazy about you, but we do, we do need to keep the corn here. Uh, our next person is Mr. James Hodge. Welcome, James. Good to see you.
Always good to see you all. James Hodge, here in our great city by the sea, Long Beach, 95 East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. To whoever the stop is, try it out. I hope that didn't take my time. Uh, one thing I want to say is, uh, so, uh, purposeful, uh, that you opened this meeting up and you, oh, uh, talk about the grief that our country is going through with the police officers losing their lives, not just, just five, but many that have lost their lives over the years. Uh, we give our condolences and prayers to the families. I have family members that are police officers and have been in the military, my oldest brother in the military for 31 years, and correctional officers in my family and, again, police officers. But also, what we must understand, uh, with so many people getting mad when people say Black Lives Matter, is that, yes, everybody's lives matter, but we never remember to say about all of those unarmed African-Americans that are killed at a, uh, uh, a rate that is more than any, you know, uh, and, and so, Black Lives Matter came about to talk about all of the African-Americans that was getting killed on video, off video. You know what to do. You know to put your hands up. You know, and you're still getting killed. So, some people can get mad and say, oh, he, he don't care about, I, I love cops. I worked in the police department as an deputy warden until I got forcibly fired and quit, won my job back with the city. And, uh, so, I, I've worked with police officers, I love military police officers, I love those military police officers. They do a fine job, but I think that even as we talk about all the things that we talked about at the center, there wasn't some things answered, and for the commissioner of the city, if there was, well, we've been welcoming the police department to the MLK center for the last four years, and he's here, and they've only come about five times total. So, I extend right now, and I'm in my individual capacity, but I am on the board, I would love to set that up as soon as possible, so we can do, so they can come and tell us what to do. But then, can we go to the police department and tell them when they come to us, what they should do also? Because I think that there is, you're doing, and again, I speak from experience. The city knows that I had a lawsuit against the city. I was forcibly arrested and assaulted by a cop. And I still, I still love cops. You know, this is not about this administration, this administration. I think Jack is, is, you know, he comes onto the center. All of you guys, I appreciate, you know, I'm wrapping up. I appreciate you coming to this very important forum, you know, but I think we do have some issues in this country when statistical data is saying over and over and over. Let's get to it. Why people are scared because of, because of certain imagery on TV and certain, you know, ideologies that people may have about different race, uh, uh, about different cultures and colors of people. It's real. This is not going to make up the statistical data. It's there. It's time to time again. So, I would love to do whatever I can to the police commissioner. I'm here. I'm a board member. Uh, we can go down there today, tomorrow. Jack can come, any of our city councilors. I would love, because we don't have a program, to tell kids what to do when you're stuck by police officers. We don't have that in the city moment. So, arrive in a program. There's so many things that we can do. It's proven out there, but our police department currently is not doing it. And I look for our city officials and our city managers to continue doing what they can to interject and make our police do what works. My nephew, and I talk about black-on-black crime too, because my nephew was killed about a hundred feet from here. Ten minutes, 13 minutes from when the video shows, after the police officers got a gun call of a shooting, 13 minutes later, they left, and my nephew laid dead with bullets in the, in the radio and Channel Park homes. So, there's a lot of things that we can do to change this, but let us work together. Yeah, everybody's life matters, but let us remember Black Lives Matter too, and only because they send, because they never get the attention that everybody else do when something happened to them. So, I love you all. Thank you.
James, thank you.
Before, I think, I can say something, because I think it's important, while we're here, let's just be in that moment. I think it's important for people to understand that, um, the whole purpose of the Black Lives Matter movement is to, once again, it's never to divide us, um, as a nation. Um, again, if the movement itself was about an anti-police movement, then that would devalue the lives of so many, um, black officers who are also a part of the police department. And so, I think we need to remember that. I think also, all of us have to remove ourselves from some of the media that tries to divide us. The entire purpose of us having the ceremony last week was for us to say, not in this town. And we've successfully done that under the leadership of our commission and also of our city, uh, officials, as well as our city council. And the whole role now is for us to continue to do that, for us not to become distracted by many movements that will try to separate us, but let's continue to do what we've been doing in this, this town, and that is building on the strength of our people and building on the unity that we already have. Um, and so, I just wanted to just say that, so that our people will understand that when we say Black Lives Matter, it's just to remind people that the history of this country has, for whatever reason, devalued black bodies. But here in the city of Long Beach, uh, we have held to that premise, that we are valuing everyone, um, as an individual, treating everyone with dignity and respect. Thank you.
So, next we have Mr. Ronnie Barnes. Welcome, Mr. Barnes.
How is everyone? Good evening. I'm not giving my address. I don't want you stalking me wherever you are. Thank you, Mary, for all of that. I needed to know. All right, just a couple of questions. Just came to talk about here with, um, we're speaking about buses. What is the penalty for passing a bus stop sign? When a, when a driver, a motorist is passing, they ignore the stop sign? Is there, is, is...
I think it's, I think it's a three-point violation. Is that correct?
Three-point violation.
Sign. Oh, for buses. That's right, for buses. Wrong stop sign is three, three points for, for, for bus stop, wrong sign.
I would love to see more offices out on Park Avenue where I see it every day. When we have our school year, during school year, not as much during summer, because summer school's a little different, but, um, yeah. as much during summer, because summer school's a little different, but yeah, that's that. The boardwalk black lane situation, we discussed that last time at the council meeting, did it have to happen?
Thank you.
We, I saw that we had that arts and crafts festival on the boardwalk, and I was told by Mr. Aron, who's not here tonight, that you couldn't stain the wood, it wasn't possible to stain the wood, but I see stains on the wood or some kind of markation from whatever happened from one of the videos that we had on the corner of Long Beach Road and Shore. You can all take a look at that at your own discretion, but I'm still for the markation and identification of the bike lane. I see every night problems with people screaming and shouting about, this is the bike lane. Of course, we have tourists here also move on. They don't note that that's the bike lane, there's nothing that says it's the bike lane, and it causes verbal altercations and sometimes physical altercations. So can we look into staining the wood, not the lines, just the little bicycle man in that area maybe, I don't know. It's not for me to do, that's what you got to do. So that's that. I also wanted to get a follow-up on the study in Channel Park Homes. I looked on the website, I didn't see any information about the survey, about the quality of the density in Channel Park Homes. For those of you who don't know, there was a study done by Race Racism where they tested or interviewed 80-something people or families units in there, and they found mold and complaints of mold and things not being remedied after sanitation. Also, there was another study done recently with six units out of 180, saying that there isn't any mold in those six units, but I want that study and I want an independent study, which is something that we discuss, so I want to know where we are with that.
I haven't answered that. First of all, I would remind everybody that we are not housing the burden. Having said that, we posted not only the, I think, five or six years' worth of data that we received from hub, but the most recent, their April 28 visit that we got a letter on at the beginning of June, we posted all that on the city website.
Where exactly? Is it, it wasn't, which section of the page is it?
I don't know the section, but we can, we'll have, John will be happy to send it to you, the board is over there, happy to share it.
Okay, well, let's make the website more user-friendly. How about that?
There you go.
There we go. Sure. All right, anything on the other issues? No? No boardwalk bike lane markation? No?
Maybe Mr. Frisio could come up and speak about the, did you come up? Can you hear you about that? My microphone's off. Mr. Frisio, if you could just speak with respect to that, because as a council, we've also talked about, and this is just recent, because this is an issue that has been talked over and over again, and I know as well, being on the boardwalk and riding with my daughters and people, especially in the middle of town, so what we recently talked about is larger signs, more prominent signs, I suggested putting them at the train station. A lot of these people are coming in that direction and so they see it, when they walk up to the boardwalk, so they see it. There are signs now, but they're small.
We have actually drafted new signs that we're working on right now.
Good, because I mean, we've been talking about this, but with respect to the staining of the boardwalk, could you address that?
Yeah, so it's very controversial, and we've gotten several complaints, numerous complaints, you know, about Ron. The intent is like the center of the boardwalk has boards that are kind of a diagonal, so that is a demarcation, as far as we're concerned, a demarcation, and that is, the intent is back to the bike lane. Unfortunately, it's not received that way, as I said, and I've done that many times, and then you get scared when you walk, and so it kind of reaches by, you don't find it, and it's kind of a dangerous situation or that. And I think we can have a dialogue, but I'm not saying it is not, I guess, if some police officers are not familiar with how, if they would take the stain, that's something we have to look into, but I also don't really know enough about it.
I think there's a lot of everybody's spoken about it.
Oh, there you go. Doesn't take the same.
Yeah, I think that that's the experience, at least in Puerto Rico, with that wood, that it just, even food stains, for example, will last a certain amount of time and wash away because it's not porous, it doesn't absorb, it only stays for a while until the sun bleaches it, and then it's not, and the same thing happens with paint, it will wash away eventually. These are the issues that we've been discussing with the council, with Mr. Black River. I mean, we were looking at and we received the complaint all the time, Mr. Miles, all the, ever since, yeah, ever since the boardwalk went out. It's a big thing. Absolutely. I mean, I have family, and all of a sudden I notice buses coming out, and I quickly get my family out of the way because they don't know. Some of them are not.
I worry about the kids, because see, kids from Oceanside or wherever, I'm a Brooklyn problem, they have no clue what's going on with the bike lanes. Some, personally, you have some very lovely animated residents who say some nice epithets to these kids that they're walking down the bike lane, and it's like, if I heard somebody talking to my child, I mean, we're going to have a problem. And so, and we're not going to discuss it. I'm just letting you know how I feel about it. I know a lot of people feel like that about their children, so I just want to find a solution, a resolution to this. We're open to dialogues.
Right, and I know that there are special officers also, I've seen enough, but I hope we need more than that, because they can be everywhere at the same time.
Yeah, we're a combination of enforcement, demarcation, no sign, just name that on your campaign, just on a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miles, thank you, Mr. Frisio. Our next person to ask is Mr. Marcus Tinker. Welcome, Mr. Tinker.
Good to see you.
Hey, man. Name is Marcus Tinker, not giving my address, you don't have to, plus, the same person that Mary spoke about, named Butch paper, not sure if any of you guys know about him. Avoid him on Facebook, he goes by the Butch paper name, goes by the Joseph paper name, and goes by another name. So block him, he will call your house at all kinds of night, times of the night, call your cell phone, harass your family every day. Make sure you avoid him, because he's ridiculous. He's ridiculous. He's mentally insable, he left me a voice message Friday, I was at the end, he's going to go broke back there, and the voice message just said that he has so many issues, everybody's turning his back on me, trying to jump out the window, doesn't know any person of anybody up here, to be honest with you, and he said if I told him to jump out the window, he'd do it. So this guy is very mentally insable, and you don't know how dangerous this person will be. So I think something needs to be done about him, even though some of us have done police reports, but something needs to be done with this guy, because he's very dangerous. Shotstopper, I know that was put in, you know, in place last year. There have been a few shootings in Long Beach that have guns undetected by shotstopper, so one of my questions to the council is, what is going to be done to make sure that works? The other week, there was a shooting on Han Street around 1:00 in the morning, that was on Sunday, July 10th around 1:00 in the morning, one or two shots fired at the car. Shotstopper never did good. So something needs to be done about that, because God forbid if somebody would have got shot in response time because it didn't go off, somebody could have been there, could have been a senior, could have been a child, could have been anybody. So that needs to be fixed. And the second question is, regarding the recruiting of minority police officers, I know Commissioner Haggerty, you know, he got up and spoke about that, myself and the rest of concerned citizens and other members in the community, we assisted with putting the flyers all over Brooklyn, Queens, Nassau, something like that, so the response was good. So my thing is, what more is being done to make sure we add more women cops, more African American cops, more Latino cops, more Asian cops, it has to reflect the community at all, so what more is being done regarding to that?
Can you give the commissioner a key? Mr. Tinker, do you have other questions? No, no, thank you, appreciate that.
Unfortunately, or fortunately, we got a brick from Head Start Building, and when they built that building, inside of it, they put in two safe rooms. The walls of the two safe rooms are completely lined with metal plates, as we just told them. And we found that those metal plates interfered with the triangulation of the shotstopper. So we asked about putting the shotstopper, people came down and said that would be a perfect location to put the sensor. We went to the Head Start, and it's a federal program, so you can imagine the amount of red tape. We just got the approval and put the sensor on just the other day, so we're now triangulating. Of course, not only when we first put in shotstopper, we actually went around town, two legal weapons so that door would capture the reverberation. So we did all that, and we haven't had a chance to go out there and do a live fire to pick up these shots. I do have a meeting with Mr. Miles, who's our salesman this week, so we are staying on topic.
Mr. Tinker, can you just tell us, can you give us a timeline, when did this happen, when did you discover that?
We discovered, we discovered it about six weeks ago. We immediately got, called a company in, they told us it would be a month before they get a rep out, they said that's not acceptable, they had a rep out for 48 hours. We identified the building as a problem, and then it took us all this time to get to the federal government to give the okay. We had to do all kinds of environmental studies, they want to know the exposure that the unit would emit, because the playground's on the roof of that building, and that's where the shotstopper has to be, so we had to do, get all kinds of verified research that it's as much as a cell phone, and there were a lot of questions, and we wanted to ensure the safety of the children. Now, how does that safe room work? Something goes off, that's? The children are all ushered into the safe room, it's got a metal door on it, it closes, if you're outside with a gun, it's not going to go through the walls. So in other words, for people, if there's a problem, that's where you go to save? That's where you go. Run it to the building? Yes, there's camera on it, they only give a bolt to the, there is, it's a very, very good problem.
So I just want to ask a follow-up question. So you said in six weeks you discovered this, now, I guess, you're part of the crisis team, does this information filter in some way to your crisis team? Because this is the first time I'm hearing that we, the team, I don't know, were you aware of this? Because this information did not get to the community, you and Marcus, if you could give me that information now, because I'm really concerned.
Well, Marcus has my cell phone number, he calls me at night, day and night, something's going on, and really a very responsive team, as does the Sodom and some of the other members, but Marcus is probably the most vigilant, and Jackie is number two, so the others can beat it up a little and make me work harder. I have no problem with that. And Marcus and I can discuss this later.
Okay, so that was, okay, so just, I just want to have a sense, because again, I know that Marcus, he's faithful to the community wall, and now here, we are unaware of the fact that it's there in terms of the spot shot, or it's there, but it's not really working. So in terms of the timeline, when do we anticipate this, once again, being in effect?
Very quickly. Very quickly, Mark. And the second question regarding the, what we're going to do now that the test has been given and all the proof has been done, unfortunately, we are under New York State Civil Service law, which, and when I was in sergeant school, my paper was on the one-dimensional police testing is not the best way to go, and if you don't write a good test, you have no shot, no matter what you do. So that's, that's one of the hurdles we have, is people that tend to write good scores are not necessarily fit in being in police work, they're going to the business sector, there's sometimes more work to be made, some are foolish enough to be lawyers. But on the whole, we have a great group, but we're not even allowed to look at the list to find out any kind of demographics on the applicant. So when the list is published and the decision's made whether it's for local or localist, then we'll start the investigations and hopefully we'll be able to reach a population that is equal to the demographics of our community.
But there has been pressure, there has been diversification efforts, even in terms of the applicant, although several members in my office were involved in programs in the community.
Yes, we did, we actually did a measuring program, we did a tutoring program at the Channel Park Homes. I actually taught a class, and it's like a speech, taught a class, we had a certified teacher come in, it was a six-session series that I taught the last semester, which was the Thursday before the test, on all different test taking techniques. I have scored very well on all my tests, so I'm personally able to, no, no, it's a building I have that, that did well for me. And unfortunately, there are some very good cops and very good sergeants, and they never will be, because they're not as good a test taker as some of the others, and you can only go three deep before you have to appoint somebody, or you're going to suffer worse. And you're going to be found, they have to make the guy a personal.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Tinker. Okay, our next person, Mr. George Bobo. Commandant, he's no introduction, and, welcome.
Hi, everybody. I want to thank you again for attending our rally tonight to pay action on Black Lives Matter, to the city of Long Beach, and I appreciate all of the work that you have done with us to this point, and I feel like we're getting very close to a consensus to make this a thing of the past, so I appreciate your work for this. And that was really cool that I came up here to say, but tonight, I was actually moved, there was something bigger that made me be here tonight, I think, and I just want to say that I have the utmost respect for our police force, and I just want to affirm that Black Lives Matter. And I have read that Black Lives need white bodies, and I believe that, because it's something that I believe in, that without equality and without equal opportunity for all, as long as any Americans are treated different from others, this is not the America that I believe in. I have to say that I'm very saddened, as a white person, that in 2016, I'm hearing about how we have to teach black youth how to be arrested, that is just, that made me cringe. And I understand where it's coming from, and I understand the thought process behind it, but it just hurt me to hear that. And I think that we, I don't think that anybody meant anything bad by that, but it just, it did hurt me, and made me realize that tonight I had to break my silence as a white person and just make sure everybody knows that I believe Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobo. Thank you.
I have a couple more seconds, I just want to say how proud I am of the youth here tonight that came to speak, and who also inspired me to be a little more personal about how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobo. Appreciate you coming. Okay, our next person is Mr. Joe Rann. Joe, is this a senior here? Come on up.
Okay, good to see you. Bag monster, planet earth. I'd just like to say that I really feel 100% with what George Tholoff said, that Black Lives Matter, and I'm coming here tonight as a visual reality check, because there's millions of organisms that are in our ecosystem, if you aren't aware of this, that you have to be conscious about, because they cannot have a voice. They are not capitalists, they don't have lobbyists who can come and see they're coming there by half, when we do work to try and protect our environment, which needs to be done yesterday, it really needs to be, thank you for working on it. I wanted to also add that the single-use plastic, I think, as a bag monster, when I'm in the water, I noticed that it's not just plastic bags, it's also daycases from Long Beach. Maybe we can use perhaps some sort of environmentally friendly compostable material, and possibly even put on the back of the daycases that there's a bike lane in the middle of the boardwalk. But that might be a good idea. Good idea? I think that did any further.
Thank you. Thank you, Tinker. Thank you. And next person, also, no introduction, Mr. Scott Botner.
That's a hard act to follow, man. All right, how you guys doing? Scott Botner, I want to thank everybody for the support on this plastic bag issue, you know, that's why I'm up here, I'm a proud member of the Financial Advisory Board, and you guys have been so supportive of this, I just want to let you know, Mr. Gaskin, that we're going to get this legislation done, and there's going to be a bunch of suits that are going to come up here from the plastic bag industry, and they're going to try to scare this board, and don't let them scare us, because they're going to tell us how great plastic bags are, but we live here, we know what this plastic bag is doing, we are watching it live through the air, we are picking it We are picking it up. You know, I'm always out on the bag, and I'm cleaning up that... You know, we got 10,000 of them out of there, and that was just incredibly disappointing to see. And everybody who I speak to, and including the merchants and the people behind this thing, so everyone is supporting you. We have the public, we have the merchants, everybody wants to bring their own bag. And when you walk into a supermarket, still, if you pass this legislation, it will be your legacy. You will be the first city in Nassau County that will have this. It will be on your record, it will be part of you, and you will be smiling as you see everybody and saying, "Thank you for carrying your own bag." That's, that's a really good thing. As far as the other issues tonight, yes. You know, I'm part of this community my whole life, and, you know, black lives always mattered. I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know where, you know, this kind of thing. We have friends in the community, we play, we see them everywhere. So, in this community, I always want to say we're all, this, this community effort that you need to get the people out to come into this community, I'm always, I'm always there for that, and you can always count on me for that. So thank you guys again for all your support.
Mr. Botner, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, Mr. Matthew Adler. Welcome, Mr. Adler.
Matthew Adler, I'd just like to follow up from last council meeting with the parking situation at the Long Beach Hotel, as we were told that the police commissioner and Commissioner Kimmich would go down the next day and find out if they had an off-site lap to park, otherwise it would be shut down. And I know that Friday, with the fireworks was supposed to go on, they opened up the business and started parking. I know that our police department did take it and got shut down. But my question is, why were they allowed to open? And just kind of update what's going on with that.
Good question. There is a lot of pro-pleasing that does go on, but when a business opens illegally, there's nothing you can do preemptive. You can tell them that they can't open, and they'll get summons, and that's exactly what happened. We, there's nothing we can do ahead of time to prevent them from opening until they start to commit the crime, if you will. And once they did, we shut them down. This past weekend, they didn't even open up. It was a beautiful weekend. Both myself and Commissioner Kimmich went by there numerous times on Saturday and Sunday, and they didn't have a vacay set up.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Mr. Adler. Excellent question. Next, we have Mr. Lou Duba. Lou, welcome.
Good evening. Lou, you've got Long Beach. A couple of quick things. I was down at the beach yesterday. Took my bike, drove down, put my light... There's no bike racks. I know you always want to have everybody have bike racks. There's no bike racks on the beach in Nassau, not on other beaches. But have the bike racks. I mean, bike racks are a good thing. If you get some bike racks, why is that beach? And again, I know there are bike racks in other beaches. Also, there's the, there was an issue that came up at the last zoning board meeting down the house on the corner of Kirkland and Pine Street. Whether they go to subdivide it or if they don't do it, but the issue that house seems to be maintained. There was someone who does own that property, it's not a vacant property. So someone's looking to, at least, till something's done for that property to have its maintenance. In terms of the bike lanes on the boardwalk, I think, I think either Commissioner Tagley or Mark Rugo are going down to Jones Beach to see whether they have stands that go on by the bike lanes, to denote that the bike lanes are there. Maybe I've seen people approaching the boardwalk, coming up on the top of the ramp, maybe there's something there, saying bike lanes with both ways, because people don't have both ways. The crossover is one way, not the other way. And the last thing I want to bring up is Long Beach response. Great act. I was on my bike on Sunday, there was a chunk of boardwalk, a piece of wood there was missing from the boardwalk. I've noticed it for the last couple of weeks. I'm waiting to see if anybody else actually called it in. I called it in Sunday afternoon at 1:00. I got a text message or actually an email on Monday. I got something this afternoon. Actually, my wife and I was on the boardwalk, she said, "They're fixing something on the boardwalk." I already mentioned where it was. Just taking care of it. Maybe, I don't know how to, maybe you put it in an ad in the local, not in an ad, just some sort of public notice to say, because I don't know how many people actually see this and actually use this, but it's a great app. I've done this several times, seeing, you know, issues on the boardwalk, and it gets resolved, and it's a great thing. And I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. I appreciate your comment. And we have now this Amy Duba.
It's a family affair.
I have to say, though, that Amy helped me with a homeless person that needed a place to stay and to give me advice with that. I appreciate that, and I appreciate it.
Hope to help. Amy Duba, I haven't written you all an email to anyone. Because I didn't hear anything from anybody. You just never got them.
They sent it.
Where?
Where?
Oh, at least a week ago. It was right before I heard from you, so I thought I'd respond to that. Okay, well, now I don't have to do this here, I can do this privately. I just wondered what you can sponsor, so. Okay, I'll do it.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Alice Scott. Welcome, Ms. Alice. Good to see you.
Ms. Alice Scott, from Long Beach. I just wanted to say that as an African American, our experiences are different from other races. And I would like for you guys to consider, you know, our experiences and not try to, you know, to not try to say like it doesn't matter, or you don't, you haven't experienced that, because every race has their own experiences as they go through life. During Hurricane Sandy was the best time for me to reside in Long Beach, because everybody was one, you know? Everybody was together, you know? We were helpful to each other. It wasn't about money, it wasn't about color, it was just about people. So I ask that when you guys are making your changes in Long Beach, and you're remodeling, and you're sitting amongst each other, and although there may not be other races in the building, but consider everyone, you know? Because everyone matters here, you know? When you're, whatever, whatever decisions that you're making, try not to exclude anyone, you know? Include everybody, you know? Just because I'm not here doesn't mean that I would not want to be here, or would not want to live here, you know? So I ask that you guys just have a heart, you know, compassion for everybody, because everybody matters.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Joanne Moore. Welcome, Ms. Moore.
Thank you. Just, Joanne Moore, West Boyway. I just moved here, I just moved in this past November. Spent a lot of time walking on the beach. It's so beautiful, but I noticed all the plastic, all the plastic that was on Long Beach. And I kept wondering, I looked online, I'm like, why isn't the property cleaning the beach? Must just be that it's winter. But the plastic was there, it washes in from sewers and elsewhere, and ships out at sea. So I became very concerned about this. I came there to put the ring around the Long Beach, and the great rally up there. But above in the tree, there was a plastic bag up there. You know, it's just, it's something that's simple to do, you know, and ordinance of some sort to discourage the plastic bag use. And I did a lot of petitioning for this, and there was a lot of enthusiastic support from people. I think that's all.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. This is something we've been doing. And, you know, it's, it's got to be an entire town, it does, you know, it's got to be the whole community. Our next person is James Mangle. Welcome, Mr. Mangle.
Hello.
Chief, we're the partner with you there. It comes every time. Good for you.
I'm James Mangle. How are you? I just put something in really quick, and not too good at as of then. I just wanted to ask you guys to vote on approving the plastic bag ordinance. It's more of a common sense to vote for the elimination of this environmental plague. Being a city by the sea, please represent us by showing your concern for the health of our ocean and bays. We got a beautiful view out here, ocean bay, but underneath it's inundated with plastic refuse. And it's just the tip of the iceberg. Forget about the sewage plants dumping that fluid into the water constantly on a daily basis. This is a crucial step that can be accomplished with your support and lead us to bigger and better solutions. We need you to support these advocates for the environment. All these people are here, they've been coming out for the last year, draining it to sway in the opinion of common sense. Because we're the important voice for the oceans, for the wilderness, the environment.
Everyone, I'm happy you came, and thank you for coming to here.
Thank you for being here. Next, we have Dr. Joe Isman. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Joe Isman. I live in New York. I'm a resident of Long Beach for 35 years. I'm also a business owner for 35 years. And I would just like to say for the record that I and my family and my business, and the people who work in my business, and the people who come to the business, support legislation to eliminate the use of single-use plastic bags. It's an unnecessary convenience that should end, and not only is it impacting Long Beach, but in the farthest reaches of the world. Thousands of miles away from any kind of civilization, animals are starving to death because they recognize these plastic as food, and they're filling their stomachs with it. It completely fills their stomachs, and then they die of starvation. So the thing that we'll be doing will not just impact the beaches or the trees here for the entire world, and we have the opportunity to do that. So I urge you, vote again, vote for that initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. And we have also, this is the deep snow introduction here, Mr. Sam Pindell.
Firefighter. Good evening, Sam Pindell, Long Beach, New York. I originally came up to speak on the whole bag initiative. I want to commend the residents in the room and the residents who are not here today, especially from the Surf Rider and All Energy and Operations Flat and the whole BYOB bag movement. They've done a tremendous job, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the legislation, hopefully being put forward by our, by our city, that will hopefully create a sustainable model to reduce the usage of single-use plastic bags and really push and motivate reusable and alternative means of, you know, carrying your things. So I just want to say I'm also on board with them, and I want to ask both of you to say. Two more things I want to touch base on real quick, hopefully get a little response. East Palm Civic, my civic, as, at the beginning of the summer, around April, took part in a city civic collaboration, which we're, hopefully, including road safety and pedestrian bicycle safety. And we took a next project, and we painted the ends of the Center Islands on boulevards. And I just want to say it's been working very, very well. I've noticed a lot of people parking on it, which is improving visibility and creating safer transportation for everyone. One thing I'm looking for a status update on is the stop lines and the crosswalks that were supposed to be going in with that. Stop lines obviously help rep the vehicles. Crosswalks also help identify the areas of safe crossing the streets. Any status update on those? I've only seen maybe one or two of those since I've already catched one before.
I don't know if Mr. Arrejo can give us an update, or should I? Oh, I see. It's the police department. You're absolutely right.
We converted to the use of thermal plastic, which is much healthier for the environment as well as gives us much more light to the stop lines. And it's a machine, and it broke. We just got it back this week. So we started the project, the stop line project back up. We're going to go as long as we can, the thermal plastic is also very expensive, so we'll go as long as we can with the stop lines, and then follow up with crosswalks where we can, and then we will convert to A, to save money. Hopefully, as the years go by, you will add additional thermal plastic, less long. And this idea, I wanted to honor these two men at the city council meeting, Richard Boomin and Neil Montego, because they met with Jack and I before the summer to bring forth this project. And they're too humble to come here and get a proclamation, but I do want to send out a thank you to them.
That's a great mention and a great update. Thank you, Mr. Pindell.
I'll pass on more to them, I need to then maybe once or twice, we need on things. One more thing, I was working, I was looking to find out, I know it's not the housing authority, and Channel Park Homes are not under the exact direction of the city. I know they're housing authority, but I know the executive director and the board are placed by our city administration. I saw a bid notice going out for some sort of restoration or renovation of the Channel Park Homes. Is there any update the city, the bids went in the 30th? It goes to...
Wouldn't have that update.
Would have any, is there any information, does the city have maybe any information on what the project could be? It is in our city? What's going on? No one knows anything?
No, the housing authority, as you know, it's a separate, it's not just a, it's not just a separate department.
Separate entity.
It's a separate corporation. So, and by the way, the director is actually chosen by the board, not the city.
Okay, but the city manager is the board?
I just, the city manager.
Who is the...
The board is chosen by the city, that's correct.
Okay. I'm just wondering, people have asked me, and I don't know any answers, I'm wondering if anyone from the city would like to share a little light on what's possibly happening or could be happening in that area? If not, I don't know, how do we access the housing authority? How will we, see if they give some public information on some sort of...
Could you correct it, Mr. Kruse?
Okay.
Because we don't really have any, any information on it.
Okay, that's, that's the answer. Thank you.
Mr. Pindell, thank you for being here. And both, thank you for coming out tonight, everyone. Get home safely. We're in Long Beach.